Moloeni, moloeni bafundini Tia nibona Obanipili Nam dipilile kuelitala Indawoke ndaweni mameleni ukuzo Ekamieni lenkosiyetu uYesu Kristu Moloeni Siza kwenza iBabestadi Itopik eti Xengoba nibona apempa Lweni Preaching the Gospel in Modern Times Uksumayela Ivangeli Kulama tlesha angoku Preaching the Gospel In Modern Times Uksumayeli Ivangeli Kulama tlesha angoku Nammla nje ya sisufunda Bible Indawo SCSS kanga anya xengoba skuba Sauz kanga anya Godwa Asisufunda Bible Mastandase Siyakulela obano Tito onjenga awe somalja nanga liminiya nammla Utiko ostanaayo Utiko oskatanelayo Utiko who provides for us And protect us Xantumisa ika malakweli ngweli Sitikubobo onke oTito akako onjenga awe Asisungula nalaya namtlai sessions imemi present siyako But we are aware that you are not God who can be invited You are the one who invite us Because you are everywhere, you are always present Wherever we want to be Tito wetoinweli ukhlaluko nawena You are already in places that you are afraid to go to Because uTito koe indaweni zonke ngamaklashonke But allow us ukuze kosinati sive oba Sichiro kuwe oba singa tanda ube part of this session We invite you uba ube inwaleni xengoba Tito We prefer oba ube in charge of everything Ukuze kwenze kezonke sindo kakulhe Maliti kenga maklashonke litaflako liche peshkuetu Xengoba kuba itema nitulikuwe kosis tempe wena Masinga azes tani swee Amen Itopik etu ya nammla eti Preaching The Gospel In Modern Times Uksumayeli Ivangeli Kulama tlesha Angoku Kulama tlesha angoku Kubalekile kakulu ukuuti Wonke umtu Okoloayo Nga kumbi onu kano valoksumayeli Ivangeli Awakonde kakulhe amaklasha Azalona bam Awakonde sise kakulhe amaklasha Ati Nalawo esbalo angawakonde yo kakulhe Awakale ukuafunda Kakulhe uisba Ukuze Uksumayela kuake Ivangeli Kunga bilili ise Ashumayele mvaa Godwa itlesha iskulo Litlesha etile Okokala Umele uakonde amaklasha eskatolu Amaklasha tlesha lopena Es tetangalo Isba Izwe Ime kuspeka pina uwkweli izwe Ukuze Uksumayela kuake Kunga amhipeskwentloko zabantu Ashumayele Ivangeli Irrelevant To the times Irrelevant to the times of the scriptures Irrelevant to the times of the secular world Azalona bam obazintanda Tikela obage Sisu kevlopimis Wakonde amaklasha Amaklasha obomi in our surroundings Okuspini Wakonde amaklasha esba Ukuze Nga shumayelika kulu amaklasha Utiko are related To uIsrael Godwa sikuitlesha dekaawa itime American church Nga shumayeli amaklasha Etlesha alka Yesu Godwa sikuitlesha alka moyao indwe Azalona bam obazintanda Nga shumayeli amaklasha ekwa kulau na uTito ise Disconnected From the time Yoko kuba Ufiki nutitu nyana Uwe krita Ngoko litlesha alka Tito Moya oindwe Preaching the Gospel In Modern Times Tela obage Sisu kevlando awakonde Wakonde kakulhe amaklasha Azalona bam obazintanda Leno ingaita umsumayeli ogokuba Kutikalishlokoma ilizwe Lisiti uYesu yaguu ya Lishlokomi ilizwe lisiti umbonezintamine Kusitra kusenzeka ivolkeno eskuama nyamazo Nobas kwen liswe Nanto anina enzeka Umtu obiswayo achonge itlesha Ati Alka afike napecha Ukuze Anga atiya ukwela epulpiti Anlahye kisi bantrani ka Kristu Ka zano Anga koi kisi abantu Lisepu utelo napecha Niathando akakulu ngutita Benjiti maskare vlando oba Awakale Wakonde kakulhe amaklasha Okuspini Azalona bam obazintanda Bonke abashumayela Ivangeli Bameluwe Ukukonda Ogokuba Ungyanezoloba uksumayela yo Ungamsebe Ngena Yenjoba Benga yitlingisisi kakulhe Inhela Abaitumelangaayo Ivangeli bantuni Oba Ingenza ukuuti Inga vinamaa kaisie bantuni Inga sedez ya ufika kubo Gena entele tuinyelewa kaya Ivangeli bantuni Azalona bam obazintanda We need to recognize the change of times Oba Sikuitlesha loku Ne technology Sikuitlesha lenokshedik Sikuitlesha etile Godwa nazi Isikriti Avangeli We proclaim the Gospel in the world The world that changes time and time again But We profess to the world the unchanging God Utiko nokama tlesha echech Who remains the same So that whatever we say out into the world Azalona bam obazintanda We may not be deceived by the change of time To change the passing of God whom we proclaim into the world Godwa sazoba umutiko ati Mnayova Alikutukukuke Umutiko ongachijii Nokama tlesha echech We are proclaiming an unchanging God In changing times But a powerful God Who changes unchanging situations Utiko wanamanda Ochijimebo kesnachi So when we proclaim the Gospel nowadays We need to be always In the context of our days But sitinga neto Azalona bam Noba ilizwe ningashlokoma Noba bangachini nabantu Tina shumayeli Ivangeli Atiti What does the majority say? Godwa siti Against the tide Utiti We are speaking out The ideas of God Against The ideas of the majority Nogochini na ilizwe okulmeke Noba pichini na ilizwe Ngenmeko se niizwe Ukani valuetu kukuti utiti Noba kwakutana Bale sicha ma profeti Utso myewoofa wemi kus Against Whatever the world is saying So but Bati noba wati Chuta singawe Bati Imeko yato Aizu kena kakulhe A very prophet bati God utiti We proclaim The idea of God Against The idea of the world Benjiti ke azalona bam Lomtu ukuze suwate kakulhe Eh maskare vlando Preaching the Gospel In Modern Times Nasi gendwa yes tatu Utiko waka pe God realized That humanity is changing In the world Wakapela utito oba Gya chijza ilizwe Gya chiju umtu ilizwe Azalona bam Ngena ochijza belizwe Nangenya ochijza komtu Utiko watu meka unyana wake Ukuze amushene umtu Kimeko utito Aweyamutale umtu obama kadekuyo Nivenu azalona bam Ngena yokuba Ni chijza ilizwe Nangenya yokuba Echijza umtu Utiko watu ma unyana wake Ukuze amchijza umtu Amushene kimeko utito Amfunekuu yo But Ifunu nokuze leno Preaching the Gospel In Modern Times UYesu esakunika enzi He noticed that Aba basanuana By choice Gunedra wangayasiyo Watikuubo Nina aningado amehkabati So that Kai liswe ni chijza Ban tabitenten to change Noba wabashia Endawene right spiritual And intellectual Wabashia ndawene right Efuna oba Noba ingakukuki liswe Ningabachi yichiwati Nina oba Ni chena ni chiyahkabati Senasi joba Aningaba amehkabati Benjiti ke Maskare gozungao Azalona bam Si pete itopik eti Preaching The word of God In modern times Proclaiming The gospel Of healing and transformation In current times Uksumayeli Ivangeli Kulama kesha angoku Nasi gendwa Nasi gendwa Nasi gendwa azalona bam Everyone who preaches the gospel today Needs to understand that We are preaching To an overcommunicated Community of society People esumayela kubo But crowded Imiyaneso Imiyaneso Evvelama galonke Preaching to people Who are given messages on TV On the phone On internet We are preaching to people Who are given messages On radio And Out in the news of the world So sisumele bantuni Aba kwa Kimiyaneso Kimiyaneso Overcommunicated Community Now fneke umsumayeli Asuze oba Intoni twasanaayo Enomakuko kuletwa ilizwe Niwofansayo Kuteni lenjo Kufune buumtu Amameleni wena Itoingolo yese Benjiti chetu uki Abashumayeli Banokando ofa Lo sisifangeni Yenene Evvelaku Tito Wenene Esisi sifuru lo Senene Lotemashluunkospen That has no basis Opeka Godwa Ivangeli yano tana Godwa ngetesa lambo Eh chijja imego umtu Eh chichi imego umtu Why should people Listen to us And not listen to radio and TV? Why should people listen to us? Azalona bam basumayela And not listen to the internet? Why should they listen to us? Bangamameli imte indawesi Zihambe sili izwe Why should they listen to you When you preaching the gospel? That is What will make the difference If we are to proclaim the gospel? Oba Why should they listen to us? As well It's a waste of time bazalona bam Oba Abantu Aba overpopulated Bati Sitting in a congregation With a preacher in front of them Godwa kade puma Mapumele ngafuma nanga anto Fneke ti kai puma Nga puma endaweni Edatsunyeru kuyo Akume Esiti Dimbonile Dimfumele uYesu Disusubutu nga ayeh Oguntwa kua nguuye Untandwa boni Esuseyo yoto yoba Kuko yoto kutito Nbaliti mina izwe Utiko otulaki mitualo Bantuni nala sinayo Abasinwayo Utiko osisimpiliso Bantuni naba kulaayo Utiko onnikaracha Bantuni naba chafileyo Utiko osisusiliso Kwako banagoni So datu ngabilili ise oba Umtu amameli tina Eh mrobam kaundipende osula Kanbulisa bazalona bam Nbulisa Ekamieni lenkosiyetu Yesu Kristu Wasena sana ete Ilizwe Maliti kai liswe ikumbelisha Litili izwe Ngena yesisi zatu Sisabamameli Ngena yesisi zatu Sabamameli abashumayeli Nasi gendwa Eh Timyek We are proclaiming the gospel Of Jesus Christ In modern times Nasi gendwa Ilizwe Esishumayela kuro Ali siboni With the lenses Of the preachers of the past The world Looked At the Preachers of the past With saintly eyes Obechitla be matonga Ba bone stakaskachi Ba bone Abachangesoba kaye wofa Abantu abalinje ukala wente rongo Ukuze kade koto ka Abete kwele izwe lenjegilesolo iso Ba usefamas kapeswe jarba Godwa kai liswe lisichonga Azalona bam tina Niyasasi ilizwe Isipene zetu Ispene refort Iera ispene Isipene Iletoy rongo ngawe Ngenas izwe Imorto zetu Niyasasi sizwe Ilizwe indawo esmisakulo Kuso soka Lisichonga ilizwe It does not look at us With the same eyes As the preachers of the past Azalona bam So simere oba Siinspire izwe Inefesi omkidigeti Puchumanutoro Nabamonke wunweli Nga makacho Weyamona utito Endenahabo Azalona bam If the preachers of the past Were working there They were working A lot so hard To remain holy In front of your congregation We need to work twice as hard So kai liswe lisichonga Azalona bam Godwa liti Siboni nyatiru lavo Ipeke bonini Ichavana Bahape kontenu wake UYesu Kristo ngakatiko Ilizwe Azalona bam Needs to be encouraged Sisenzose zetu Oba nia Ikonsitalishe uki Kinamo ngamashumayelayo Sena anoy kawasa Robunwene Robunera Ukfuni weslugleyo Esiveleka So kai kongesin Imanena umsumayeli Ikotaswe Nkishone yake Azalona bam Yabasintanda Oba himamene Kulu la oba Umane umsumayeli Oba tanga yabantu Kuno kohakele Kulu la Umane umsumayeli Onotoro Onotango Kunalo soloke silwa Kunalo kikani sekawa Kulu la Umane wa Umsumayela unamileyo Kunalo uchongo uchongo Pakatkwe kala Now if we are to preach the gospel Into this world We need to consider these things So that abantu wakatiko Eh bangabopi benga masumsidis Yenayo oba Uthandolo etu Lufige leka nyenane ngati Kabanya bantu Uthandolo kati ko Kalufigaanga And on ngati kabanya bantu Elike Lipwelo umsumayeli ngamunye Kandi siti umsumayeli Nguya nabanina abashumayeli Ivangeli Noba uishumayela api lomtu umsumayi Kansi tumsumayi antheati momdo de inwelyo itawa foru umsumayi Antheati momdo komish inwelyo itawa foru umsumayi Kansi tumsumayi miduna Nkibeki sakuya nabanina Onotani va olufela kutito uksumayeli Ivangeli Nasi gendwa yes sondele Yegubelili Nasi gendwa sondele yegubelili Umsumayeli Azalona bam Fneka understandi oba Eonan tumayewenesa ancha Sokusuka Emlo nyeni wake Sokusuka kuuye Iyamenesa ancha isipesu Upeka yabantu In tumayeno Lebati Abantu abangama wisile klabe anthea talayo In klabe bedeshe kileyo Elungileyo nebunatu Eonan tumayeno genjro bam Inesaa ancha Etitai puma umsumayi Ibalake nesaa ancha isipesu upeka mtu inekiswe Noba utka ekumbelisha Lenosisumayenayo Na lenosipilaayo Afike bone sindo sengama nayi Lenoke tiyensi oba Imatodwa isaa ancha Ivangeli katiko Usuka uki Upeka bantu Azalona bam I'm saying To accelerate The word of God From us Out into the world We accelerate it By the way we live our life We accelerate the gospel Of healing and transformation Out into the world By the way we present ourselves We accelerate the gospel By the way we are Ya si bazalona Oba sina ukenge ana ngomo yomke Si bazalona Gendwa oba Onna umsumayeli Ivangeli Ube ne chiki Utushumayeli Ivangeli Ube ne favorite Nabantu obachani Ube ne mood swings Umsumayeli Onna use umsumayeli Ivangeli Ube ne mutsu Namchate au kakanga Odumumumumayeli Ivangeli Mchane nabantu oki And ipoaga ke Ukachi and ipoaga Godwa umsumayeli Ivangeli Azalona bam obazintanda Atunkiriki Uleto anupaus Sukka Ume kunsake Azalona bam Suku me kunsake lo Gendwa funekayo Noba Noba nse Dinkengo maketo Esiniswa ngao istabati Azalona bam Godwa si fune lenjo Ati Yesu Chabachani poteam Ni tualo Ni funte gum Nga ba tinabulaki Dechobe kile kechisio Nga wechetsano Na smale lukpungla Imitefunu yee That's why I accelerate the gospel The gospel With The gospel includes Ukuya inkeswe umtu Azalona bam Nasi gendwa Nasi gendwa Eh lutando Yapa la oba Ulutando lava Ule Babestadi Nama kach Nasi gendwa lutando Zafane ndichi Godwa benimelu kunyasisabete Godwa nafane ndichi Accommodate God In your heart Azalona bam Accommodate God In your heart Azalona bam So that God In your heart Azalona bam Can give you a message Of his time Benjiti kano Ibanenjao Katiko Emberi in your heart Echiswe nyako Ibanenjao katiko Ukuze Utiko welgesa Atiposite Imyaneso welgesa Echiswe nyako Asose Ufumanipawa katiko Uksumayeli Ivangeli Uchiswe emti Endenayo utiko Accommodate uTito In your heart At all times So that When it all takes place When all the space Azalona bam Ufaga restuunkiriki Uthempe kile uTito Angasose Akwense joba na Pauli kwe Kapesko akomnako kukutoana Loke kesha Abelinda winyabans Sisondele oguspiri Preaching the gospel In modern times Nasi gendwa zonka Nasi gendwa zonka There will always be preachers Whom in our eyes Are not worthy of the gospel that we proclaim There will always be Abashumayeno tijaujonga Umboneva faneva ngamatinga There will always be preachers like that Amen utito Esigalele ndoyake Nivenu bazalona bam Kajonguena Ufiki sisle hesi Esikita Esikunda kuhayo izifu Azalona bam Esentai sakunye kuzifu Godwa utito Itiya ukwena ndoyake Esigalele uTito Ndayake Nani te washumayi Nani te We can preach the gospel Better When we learn To deal with our problems Aside Away from the congregation Nga basumayi Azalona bam And then When we get Into the congregation We remain a united front Azalona bam Nivenu azalona bam We can proclaim the gospel Better When we build our selves And each other aside By advices Of overcoming Our deadly sins It's in everyone of us As a deadly sin It's all know Esino mbanke lukufa Azalona bam Ukamchonga lomfo Ufiki nguli dwanayo Godwa In his life There is a deadly sin That can cost him Ukunkani kati ko It's advisable Today That preachers Deal with each other's deadly sins Nikotimasli deal with each other's deadly sins, nikotimasli. So that iswe, minasikheke, basaronevam, umuse karemi, umuse karemi, umsalono wako, oba uchenina, uchenina, ubuchanga ngakuchoana, uchenina, uachanga ngakata, amankasa, uchenina, uychanga ngakimati, umuse karemi, build each other away from the congregation, that God will give you power when you come into the congregation. Come as a united front, and God will bless you, God will empower you, God will give you the ability to overcome your challenges. Do not come and demonize each other on the pulpit. Basaronevam, obasintanda, the pulpit in tao, eliswe katiko, the pulpit in tao, yokhisa, oba kisioschunkireyo, when you come into the congregation, come as a united front, all the time. Then God will bless the ministry of word that we proclaim into the world. N'azige indo, this is a varla. This is a varla. This is a varla. The ministry of word that we proclaim is more powerful than the one that they read on a written text. Inshumayeno, nesi shumayenayo, umshumayele jonge, nenomchamae. Inama oncha, unezidua zipariwayo, basaronevam. So when we want to change the world, we need, indoba, singawazi niseli, amachugo zuzogo fe. Basaronevam, siharesi, ikko, kanolo kama pesa, uchiko, esetu, oba, siyoshumayen evangelie. Basaronevam, la rasintanda, kobina mani tayto, uchiko, koba, preaching is an occasion to reach God, transform humanity. Basaronevam, eliswe katiko, inshumayeno, basaronevam, siskaneko, akou tik, akukuranga so, ugozi wabantu. Loke kesa, kasi shumayena, snega siyasindoba, inama, ndesienzayo, kunaleenzo afnati. N'dineke genkoku, mandinieke, andinieka, snawu kubezizi to, nichonimilaka, andinieke ndeniti, andinieke ndeniti. Preach the gospel with conviction and with passion, basaronevam, preach the gospel with passion and conviction, basaronevam, obasintanda, and remember, whenever you preach the gospel, basaronevam, that salvation came through tears and blood, iliswe lokoduka, basaronevam, umpili wetzulu, oti kainiswe, lisiki, uchiko, umshiye yetwa, uchenawake, pesku etaba matango, basaronevam, wasuka wena, uchunpa loa mahepera, wakena, koba kanya, kubuleka mwele, eleka kasi, basaronevam. Their daily filbre became a central power, a central place for changing the history of humanity, nijuan estrad, the gospel, ayonta wia choke, ayonta wokhava, kobau tunkuni, basaronevam, wahasua, kenaya, niwaritakate, useniswe kwe, nebanikayenso, kago ksetiwa, umpikwase konbota, wakunaniswa, wakantaniswa, umyane katiko, ukusiktabati, isini iswe. So you ought never to make a comment on the pulpit. You ought never to make the pulpit a place for mockery. You ought never to use the pulpit, basaronevam, to scare your enemies. Kuyesu, wala ke pangwene, ukuse iliswe, likini iswe, inbarwesinwale woyo, basaronevam, atu mprofeti, sepiliswe nenufumake, snega ka okwera, kui kongalokshumayena, apundi unzotni wayo, aneni so osueleyo, angati, umtjana manema, afika umshumayele swabu le pulpit, afige balisa mamaani, koto shumayeli evangelie pilisaa. Andinieke, andinieke, ditinda oba ke, umtu imbo umshumayeli evangelie, welkesanaga lukunje. Simeleku wanda kulega. The illustrations that we use on the pulpit, the gestures that we use on the pulpit. Basaronevam, obasintanda. They must be relevant to the congregation we are preaching to. Andivanda, n'konwa ke, obanyadiwa, basaronevam. Start your congregation and realize, oba, the congregation and its participation. Start your congregation, when? When you are to preach on that congregation, so that when you preach, basaronevam, obasintanda, usenemzi sa kwelo, usenemzi se, ama bali, are relevant to your congregation. Most congregation are a procession of epic and moral, basaronevam, so kausumayena, ama keshanama pesa, in that congregation, so usenemzi sa, imiseke lo, yasete ropini otlwa, include, imiseke lo yelani, when you preach, kui congregation ne modern, afford, imisemzi flaha, nobo chavonkomo, basaronevam, yoni logic, afika umati, umshumayele keshasandile, atka ekete evangelie, iti liswe katiko, sugume ukaanya, kobu kaka ukaerofa, utechakabue, ame umshumayeli, basaronevam, kaisenzo nseke, etoriki gospel, ati, iti afika, illogic, basaronevam, kago pwayan sa weni so, basaronevam, yata omka, ummanu welo seti ne more, umvesiti sandile, kui kine twikli ofen, ah, basaronevam, yaki kawa umchireta, kantapokeka kona, upeka kuita tweti, angati kenamwana, ukaknamwana, kobewa kerenpama sam, aykenamwana katiko, kobabi ido fneka yo, when we preach the gospel, it must be relevant to the times. Andinieke manetwa. Obagu dala, sitting yaniyeke. Andinieke manetwa. Whatever you do, keep the purity of the religion that you stand for, basaronevam. Do not accommodate in the process of being condescible. Be careful not to accommodate things you ought never to accommodate for our religion. Basaronevam, obasintanda, the common faith, pagati, kwe christianity, nekutaisin, is untaisin worship of one true God. Basaronevam, in the process of illustrating the gospel through this time, basaronevam, keep the purity of this, of our religion. Covenantary of the past is such a good thing. Yewo uchiko akok, wa gukupa, eliswe nasenkupa, usuka milatiko wambi, gaphakwam. As much as we need to be flexible, be careful not to compromise the essence of the gospel. Basaronevam, awuchiko tu, uchiko no tu, ukusukuaake. He does not want to share his glory with foreign gods. Mkanee cha wapi, basaronevam, no chuponu cha wapi, kobu mchanja zoano, osufagari akari, kanti uchiko, ukumpire, basaronevam. Kifunprofeta siti, wobukwenga eno, wobusite lisleyo, wobusoka erofa kunni, sisono se no, esmeze uchiko, wa fulate. So when we proclaim the gospel, we must always remember to keep the purity of our religion. Uchiko marantande. Shumayeli evangelie is a living interaction that involves God, that involves the preacher, that involves the audience. Unfortunately, the preacher now is obligated to know God very well, even if he is not possibly able to know God absolutely. But the preacher is obligated to know God very well, basaronevam, to know the Bible very well and to know the audience very well, because the preacher standing at the center of God and his people carrying the Bible. Oh, basarona, kobongu, usunyezwa ununtu, onaykondi yoreto, ashumayenayo, basaronevam. Atu mparu entumiso, asemlo nyeni enzana, na wabanyayo, admin sandile, na wabananyayo, basaronevam. God will respond to an infant as well as an elder, asemlo nyeni enzana, to the mouth of the infant, basaronevam, na wabanyayo, breath spitting infant, gotum feuswale, and all time to misoba, it does not understand what it means. How can you preach something you do not understand? It is an obligation of those who preach to be thoroughly understanding of the Bible word, the Bible word and the scriptures that they preach to the world. So that iswe, basaronevam, ninka silere wisi disweni, yena yeto singabashumayeli, anteti ndesina yasiyo, ey, apundi, tibeto anche kile kesa, useninzo mtemapa, mandifana, ndinieke shenjenka n'etwa, sisondeleka. Do not pressure yourself to bring something new. You rather mastering the old teachings that we have than to fail proclaiming a new concept you do not know very well. So many of our young preachers today, basaronevam, fill themselves with unnecessary pressure to bring a new theological concept. In the process, they get absorbed by the new concepts that they bring and rather find themselves interpreting something that is foreign to our religion, basaronevam. Obasintanda, katsukwetele, ucheti duendala. Kwe ofa odelika, kwe ofa chabatleyo, itamar kaiofa, mantuniswe, unezoba, usene konsetenza and fail the process of interpretation. O gwe la, o gwe la, inewesemon that you preach, try and have something new. This is a paradox, not a contradiction. While I'm saying, kubetele, umshumayen ido wesindalisasio, kagutle, kunoba umshumayen ido wesincha uzbajas, ndiapinda ngogunndi, kangu umshumayen welkesa. Every day, when you preach, have something new to teach your congregation, so that listening to you may not be a waste of time. Basaronevam, obasintanda. Ukere, abekshumayen namaswaspe, neminyakisemwa. Wafiga, indo kutoa, gokinosis, imago da, itoxinescha, esifele, n'amefundisi, abasuke skoli, ingo wachiko, abashumayenke, abangafunswanga, ingo wachiko, wakona, kobufika n'eti atonement. Ufike, etawedi, kaiskatonochi, etolika, ukano sia. Basaronevam, kobakainkota kagaku kheoba, lendo ifunha, iti dutimi. When you preach something new, preach it very well. Ukonto ba, obunga shumayele snyexi, apuka kona, upeka kulaya, gobba, wifunge kaku khe, utausanaayo, iben duendai tumuntu. N'ezinwane duendai, n'angati mutu. N'astenda se, n'astenda se, n'astenda se. For instance, the custom of our people that cause us. Going to say this very quickly. The customs of our people have nothing to do with the blood. The customs of our people have to do with a flesh of the animal, egutoa intonya. A mass, oka nyumbond, and the voice of the elder. Basaronevam, obasintanda. So when you try to condescible us, do not say, pa etana, kaku shaki ngomo, wakliba, utonyi kikasi ngati, ninamaka kusiko, labandaba mwa kosa. Start it very well, the thing I do bring, basaronevam. Goba, ito, zabandaba myama, kasi petwe. Goba, ito, zabaja ba myama, kasi petwe, eh, ona tina mancha, delisilemwefu, esaguti, ampani yoksala, ampani ofmanisedenz, ikasi, kumkrimwase korkota, kumkrimwo kuhestu. So that when you contextualize or try to resolve, isincho, esnejo wenza, nabatu betu, unga, unga balasheki saba juwakati ko, uyasoba, ikasi, kumkrimwase korkota, umkrimwase kavare. Asalonewa. Eh, uchino ba kenukusha, lipala srimpladeni, oka nyelmi kwamakwenke, ayopwensisatane ngaro. Asalonewa, was in tanda. So, in the process of preaching the gospel into the world, start where everything. Aba ufige pulpitine, ufigu siti, sendi tulula, ngogonike. Ugwenze, in doba, abanda ba guvayo, manife, lurisule kutaso, lurisule ngondiso, lurisule fu yeso. Eh, must stand as. Oh, dosandile, koba, and now, kwasumayitile. On the pulpit, you must always remember, you are not better than your audience. Do not preach the gospel on the pulpit as if you are better than the people you are preaching to. The only difference between you and those people that you preach to is the grace of God. Ungenze, kandeni plesho, oba, you are the same sinner as they are, if not worse. Because there are also cases where the preacher is a worse sinner than the audience is preaching to. So, generally, with all, eh, generally with your audience, with all kindness and gentleness, remember that you are just another sinner, a ko bede regunabo. So that when you reach a place where you know yakati, uko to rebuke their sins, do that with all gentleness, with all love, with all pastoral approach, so that you lose not your brother, but gain him forever. Right? Eh, a legend, umfunisuchon Wesley, used to say, "You have no business but to win souls." Right? Have no business but to win souls. So, when you preach the gospel, the primary responsibility of those who preach the gospel is to win the souls. Banga pulpitena masumsenis, o yesu krestu, ingosi etu. Amen. Banga tia bandu, kaba besuka, eliswi, laba shaba eliswe, labana manjeba. Baze bati ba ufige taweni, ba fiku umshumayene peti liposo, ebashaba ngakambi. Kotama bati ba ufige taweni. Asalonewa, was in tanda. Ba fiku umshumayeni siti. Umni ka ochafileyo amancha, ahti, oke na konmelena, amantise rupri. Asalonewa, was in tanda. Ahti, bom, ahti, netwa, shapni, ahti umshumayeni, umni ka ochafileyo amancha. Ahti, umtu, onu atola ochafileyo, opeke congregation, eh, mi singta. Opentwotwotlentaka, lilitele, umfuzelo. Asalonewa, was in tanda. Afela umshumayeni sandile, baba ochafile, befanere we, kuikongo za se papeli. Asalonewa. Afika u tito, wachumenu kolexi, basura, etango se tro. Asalonewa. Mbabaku ka, u kolexi. Asalonewa. Mactave puma, bekumi kwama, za sesioni, bekotuka, baba nere burda. Kobo tito, umni ka ochafileyo amancha, ahti, oke na konmelena, amantise rupri. Basagutike, basalona, abaja ba singwa ayoko, awa beso congregation, bakufusicho. Asalonewa. U siti, isani kunoke, nirani kunale kayo, eh, nisimwa untoano, ahti, wa fumanama. Oh, kwa so toano toano, angasuke, umshumayeni, abeka masinki, namache, peswa walo. Eh, siti banesoro. Asalonewa. Koba boka bole, we asaswa banesoro. Kotwa sandile, isale taye tcha, osete, na kana ke moni, asebulakile, simeru suswana, simele kowe, ngobuchumpali, nikala, u tito manchula. Kotuja kaze, singalo esinapakati, soa uku le, abantu akati. Eh, kameni lo ise, eh, kameni lo nyana, eh, kameni kamo yoinjene. Nanga lemmin kosi anamla, sinikese raloku sukokue, yonka impekho, sokis tima kumkulu. Sitakako, u ticon tenawe, umkanyosuko, wamiliswe nka kolapsa, ticon tijwene. Kotwa ba, abati swenbuwe, usumayeni vangele, swayale sefepe loako, ukuse, wa klapki nwareliswe. Uwa pate, uwa fakamise, utebe na fakate, ah, paylacho sa, amatanga teriswe, wa tjuare nse u tito. Eh, kameni lo ise, eh, kameni lo nyana, eh, kameni kamo yawi nwele. Amen. Agansikenele u tito, ani tamsa inwe. Siteswe, klangani, wenyuvegi, ndimnani, gunaichi kamenati.